I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Jake. Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No sir.
None.
And do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 19th Public Business Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our first piece of business here will be to honor National Social Work Month. I believe we have Joy Taylor, would you like to come forward and give a little presentation, Let us know what you're all about.
Well, I'm taking Joy's place. I'm Jennifer Claude Felty. And National Social Work Month is a recognition of all professional social workers. And the Allegheny and Garrett County Caucus, Social Work Caucus, which is hosted by Western Maryland Area Health Education Center, put together a full month of things that happen. For instance, we do a food drive that benefits the Western Maryland Food Bank. And currently, we have about forty-two sites that host barrels. And last year, we were able to donate over two thousand pounds of food to benefit local families. So National Social Work Month is just a national way to acknowledge the work that social workers do to help the communities at large.
If you'd like to come forward, we'd like to give you a proclamation, please.
Yes, sir.
Do you have somebody else you'd like to come forward?
Yes.
Yes, we're actually represented by Allegheny, Jennifer Claude Felty, the Area Health Education Center, and Western Maryland Health Systems.
Okay, this is an Allegheny County Government Proclamation, whereas March is National Social Work Month, and whereas social workers change futures by assisting, guiding, and helping others to successfully negotiate life challenges, and whereas social workers strive to make a difference by helping people resolve problems and cope with distressing situations, and whereas now therefore we, the Board of County Commissioners, proudly recognize and honor our social workers who make life better for our residents of all ages by proclaiming March 2015 to be Social Work Month in Allegheny County, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate the life-enhancing contribution of social workers. And this proclamation is signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Cree Brody, and Jake Shap.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 Thank you young lady.
Thank you.
And as they go back, I do get the opportunity to, every year, embarrass my sister-in-law, Kathy, from Western Maryland Health Systems. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
This is three years in a row I've got to do that. And her husband Eric that's with her this evening, so thank yous.
How amazing, you're related to somebody in this county, huh?
Yeah, a couple people.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move right into our public hearings now with item number two, which is a road closing petition.
Good evening. Seth Theatrie, Triasalai Weston, here to present the petition of Ronald Broadwater and Nina Phillips to close those portions of Wesley and Hamlin Albedu in Allegheny Groom Subdivision. Thank you.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to close this road?
Commissioner, I guess before, today is, there could be a hearing, so we may want to ask if there's anybody yet. I doubt there will be, but we should probably ask.
Is there any comment from the public on this road closing? This first step of closing, opening?
This is actually the second.
Yeah, this is the last step.
The last step.
Yeah. With no public comment, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then item three is a road opening petition. Do we have, Mr. Rudd?
Let me explain, yes, this is a proposal to close what's called Lincoln Street, which is Paper Street behind CBS. This is to facilitate a potential restaurant project there. The entity that's seeking this petition is under contract to buy all the homes in that area, and has agreement to, from those homeowners, to acquire both sides of the street when it's closed. So it's, they've asked the county to petition to do this.
Okay.
So today would be the opening portion. Obviously, there's no objection, if you all wish to grant it. And of course, we do the closing process, which would be another thirty days plus.
Thirty days. Do we have anyone from the public here to comment on this? Gentlemen, do we have a motion for this road opening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, Code Home Rule Bill Two Dash Fifteen, Mr. Rudd.
Yes, this is the matter involving expanding the boundaries of the Rawlins Fire Area to pick up the new service area that was sent there by the Fire and Rescue Board. We had, of course, this was introduced several weeks ago, there was a hearing, the last meeting. Most people who spoke, as I recall, spoke more about the McCool issue. Really, nobody who was going to be in the area to be taken in had any position one way or the other. And once again, the current Rawlins District, there is a fire tax that's been there since the nineties, and basically what they're asking to do is to expand it so that the fire tax area is the same as the service area. So everybody's getting the same tax, whether they're in the old Rawlins area or the former half of the McCool. This does not apply to the downtown McCool, this is from basically the High Rock North, one, two twenty. So you can take, it's a legislative day, you can take action to approve this.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to extend this fire area?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And one note of comment?
Yeah.
Okay. It passes, two to one.
What, two to zero? He didn't vote, right? That's an extension?
Okay, item number five, Resolution Five Dash Fifteen, Reduction in Tax Rate.
Commissioners, on May the 12th, 2011, the county adopted Resolution Eleven Dash Twelve, enacting a strategy to reduce the county's real estate tax rate by a tenth of one cent, or a mill, for each of the county's fiscal years from 2012 to 2015. In our public work session on January the 15th, Commissioners, you directed staff to present a resolution to continue this strategy and incrementally lower the county's tax rate each year through FY 2019, again, by a single mill each year. As mentioned in the past, this incremental approach has only a negligible impact on the county's revenue receipts. That impact is approximately forty-one thousand dollars a year. For the taxpayers, the reduction is a small one on a year-to-year comparison, but the short term, the benefits for the strategy for the county residents and businesses is a commitment that your county government seeks to live within its means, and the long-term benefit certainly is a lower tax rate for the taxpayers. Commissioners, if you take action this evening and adopt Resolution Five Dash Fifteen, our budget for FY 2016 will utilize a tax rate of point nine seven eight zero. Reducing the tax rate by a tenth of one cent will set the county's tax rate at a level nearly equivalent to what the county's rate was in 1991. Important for us to take action this evening, Commissioners, this helps us to complete the county's Constant Yield Act. That will run in the newspaper for March the 16th, and I think we have our hearing date set for March the 26th. Is that correct, Jason? Commissioners, your pleasure.
Gentlemen, do we have anybody up here who'd like to see us lower tax rate in Allegheny County?
Oh, absolutely, so I'll make a motion, we move that one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one thing, and I'll speak just a little, just briefly on this, is it's not a large amount, but Dave, if I'm not mistaken, over the next four years, it does decrease by, overall, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So, that's a pretty good savings, at least we are heading the right way. And with this being passed tonight, that'll put us in eight years of this, of a total of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Give or take a few thousand dollars. So, to me, that's very important.
That's a good setup, very good setup. Okay, Mr. Barkley, would you like to come up and talk about a Barton Business Park Shell Building?
We've been talking about this Barton Business Park Shell Building for a while now, and it'd be nice to get this thing built, and so we can market it to new businesses. But this latest effort, the Economic Development Department and Department of Public Works began this design bid process in October of 2014. And I would like to thank Department of Public Works staff, Paul Cale and Steve Young, for helping us to put together the design team and working through this process. We're now at, coming to the close, ready to put this thing out to bid, so that's what we're doing here this evening, is asking for your authorization to put this project on the street, advertise for bids for construction of the shell building.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to put this out to bid?
So moved.
Second.
Is this the project that was, got held up last year because of some back and forth with bidding?
We were going through a design-build process, which we ultimately decided not to go that route, and we're going with a standard design bidding process.
Thanks Jeff.
The building is already designed.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're out to bid, Jeff. And now we've got to item seven, the Frostburg Business Park Access Road.
Yes. This, just to remind everyone, this project is 100% funded by ARC grants, there is no county contribution to this. And once again, this is a facilitating enhancement-type project to provide access to Frostburg Business Park Access Road, and the idea is to kind of pave the way for businesses, kind of enhances them to get in there.
No pun intended.
Exactly.
And that opens up, what, about twelve acres or so?
I think about twenty-two. About twenty acres. It's nine hundred feet of access road. And so we're in the final stages with, S H A is the review agent for those federal funds, and we're in the final stages of that, and Roger Thomas is in the final stages on the behalf of Frostburg, doing the stormwater management review. So once that's complete, we'll be ready to put that one on the street as well, with your approval.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to move forward with the Business Park Access Road?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Everly, our consent agenda, please.
Commissioners, our consent agenda tonight, item number eight. This motion is submitted to us by our friends in the Finance Office, who are simply requesting a change in the county's asset capitalization policy. This change essentially negates the need for our finance staff to add small capital purchases to the county's fixed asset ledger from time to time. Item number nine is a motion to approve an operation and maintenance agreement with the city of Frostburg for the Clarisville-Ecker Community Park with the city of Frostburg. Most locals recognize this facility, about twelve-plus acres, as Hoffman Field, and so-named because it's located along Hoffman Hollow Road. This property was previously maintained by the Clarisville Volunteer Fire Department, and with the closure of that organization, the county is fortunate now to partner with the city of Frostburg, who would like to maintain this facility on Hoffman Hollow Road, to the benefit of the citizens of Allegheny County. Item number ten, Commissioners, is a motion to approve a quitclaim deed between the county and R J M S K M, Inc., for a portion of Race Street in Laval. Commissioners, in January, this right-of-way was closed by the county, following a formal public notice period and hearing process. This quitclaim will allow the corporation to obtain a clear title for approximately 2,400 square feet of right-of-way, where the county has officially relinquished its interest. Item eleven is a motion to declare three vehicles surplus to the county's needs for trade-in purposes on behalf of the county's alternative sentencing program.
Gentlemen, any questions on the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Everly, do you have anything else?
Nothing further tonight, Commissioners.
And Mr. Rudd?
Nothing, sir.
You already got your piece.
I got mine too.
Jake, would you like to make any comments for tonight?
Sure. You know, our tax policy is something that started under the last group of Commissioners, and I'm happy to support that moving forward. You know, it's not a lot of money, it's, you know, when you say forty thousand dollars over the county, it's negligible, but when you look at what other municipal governments, what other county governments, what our state government's doing, you know, if the state of Maryland could roll back their tax rate to the same place it was in 1991, that would be something to applaud. So it is negligible, but it's a lot better than going the other way, so.
And I do believe that Allegheny County's been the only county in the last three years that's lowered the tax rate. Mr. Crean?
I don't have much, because I have another meeting tonight. I would just briefly, and yourself, that me and Director of Public Works, Paul Cale, attended a meeting last night with Berylville Water, that issue will be resolved shortly, sir. So it was a very good meeting, so, and also, Paul, while we're on that subject, thank you very much for setting that up with Frostburg, take care of that field, because I know you did a lot of legwork on that too, it's a beautiful place, and I'm glad that they did that, so. Other than that, no, sir, it's good.
And for myself, spent two days down in Annapolis this week, testifying on a number of bills. Possibly be back down there tomorrow, depending on whether or not they have session due to the weather. Probably the best thing that's happening is tomorrow, if they have session, I'll be testifying on four separate bills to return highway user funds to the county. And one of those bills is the governor's own bill, so, one way or the other, county will see a return, start seeing a return of highway user funds. It's not going to happen real fast. The governor's bill would take us about eight years to get back to the level of funding where we were eight years ago. But still, it's a step in the right direction. Things have definitely changed in Annapolis, I think are changing in the right direction. Governor Hogan's got a real job on his hands, but he's moving forward. Our delegation's putting in some very good bills, and I think most of them have a chance to get by, so I think, I think all in all, we're going to come out of Annapolis with having a pretty good year this year. We'll move into constituent comments. Mr. Wilmot. And we do have a five-minute rule for citizen speak, and you have five minutes to make your statement.
Yeah, I'm Kenneth Wilmot, I live at 513 Fort Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. The last meeting, I spoke on fracking, and Mr. Brody advised me to check with the neighboring states, so I did that. In Pennsylvania, there is 243 complaints about contaminated water. The state of New York has banned fracking. In Arizona, all the states that people are complaining, then they've had minor earthquakes in Arizona, so I think they put a maimatorium on that one. And also down in Texas, all over the state, they didn't give any numbers, but there are people complaining about contaminated water. And West Virginia, same way, they didn't give any number, but they said there are lots of complaints about contaminated water. Luckily, I don't live out in the country, but I know people who do. Here in Western Maryland, we don't have anything to offer, other than our natural beauty. All the big companies have moved out, and I would urge you to speak against this fracking and preserve our natural habitat up here. Invite everybody from Baltimore, Washington, to come up and have a look. I cannot understand why we need to have fracking to start with, we need to go to non-destructive, like solar power, wind power, this direction. We don't need any more gas. Talk to people who have tried to run their houses on gas, and the bill is sky-high. They can hardly afford to pay for the gas. So I don't see any reason why we should be fracking in our county or anyplace. I'm with these people who complain. You know, the human race can't exist without clean water and clean air, and this is the direction I think we should go. We should try to do away with all these things that do to contaminate or disturb the nature of our county. That's all I've got to say. And I hope that the people down in Washington and Baltimore realize, water flows downhill if we contaminate it up here. They're going to have to drink the same water we're drinking. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Please give your name and your address with your testimony.
Thank you. First time I've been here. James Chambers, 14119 Upper Sunnyside Road Northwest, Mount Savage, Maryland. I received this letter from the Allegheny County Department of Public Works, and it says on here, "At the request of the Allegheny County Commissioners." Okay? Now, we have had three meetings about water in the Sunnyside area. We've had two votes, if we want to accept it, or if we don't want to accept it. We have voted it down twice. Now, according to this letter, we have another meeting, March the 11th, at 6:30, at Mount Savage, to talk about the water, that we have voted down twice. And I would like to know what that's about.
Paul, would you please, because Mr. Chambers, easiest way to do is let Paul explain this so that it's correctly, so.
Mr. Chambers, are you?
Just simply wonderful.
You sound wonderful. What happened was, we had these votes sent out, and we've only voted once, I don't worry about the twice, we sent out ballots, we discussed having a public vote.
The first, the first meeting, we voted.
No, but that's not about the semantics, we really never had a formal vote, we had the ballot. But anyway, we sent the ballots out, and the big issue with the ballots was, we said ballots that were not returned were counted as no's, okay, against the water. And that was kind of the Public Works decision. We thought that people who really wanted the water would make the effort to turn the ballot in, and unfortunately, we underestimated the number of ballots that were not returned. In Sunnyside alone, there were sixteen ballots not returned. Since when the ballots were sent out, a number of people called me, said we didn't receive the ballot because of the post office, we lived outside the area. So we felt we were not touching, in Sunnyside, I think there's approximately fifty houses, does that sound right?
Could be.
Okay. So in Sunnyside, the vote was more positive than negative, but when you threw in the sixteen that didn't attempt, didn't return the ballots, then it threw it to a no. And we were concerned, and we discussed with the Commissioners, we're concerned that we're not hearing the majority of the people. So quite simply, we're going out and talk to each individual homeowner, and making sure that we hear the majority of the people, or, you know, almost all the people, so I don't see what the problem is, we want to make sure that we hear from everybody. And I understand, it's been a process, but remember, having one meeting about water and saying, "Do you want water or not?", that's a big decision for everybody, and we really want to make sure we get this right. And that's what we want to do, we're going to contact, we're having a meeting, you'll have the chance to say, sign a petition for or against the water, and then the people who do not show up at the meeting, we'll go knock on the doors during the day, and talk to the homeowners, and we'll also go in the evening if we have to, understanding that some people work. And with a lot of petitions returned, unfortunately, what happened was, a lot of those were not the landowner of record, and so we need to get this all straightened out, and the simple process is, we want to make sure everybody's heard that owns a piece of property in both the Sunnyside and Berylville area. So nothing, we're not trying to strong-arm anybody, like we talked, we met last night, Commissioner Brody was there. You not, if you guys don't want water, that's fine, if you do want water, we'd be glad to help. The county, it's just extra work for Public Works, which we'll gladly do if the people want water, but we're not trying to force this down anyone's throat, so that's kind of where we're at. But we want to hear from everybody, that's the whole point of this.
Thanks.
We don't feel we heard from everybody.
It does appear to me that it's trying to be forced down our throat. If we turn down their water, we have to pay ninety dollars every three months, if we turn down the water. Has anybody ever heard of something like that happening in the United States of America that I fought for? If you turn it down, if you don't want it, you have to start out paying ninety dollars every three months. Does that make sense to you? Does that make good common sense to you?
If the community is a holdup on it?
You have a water supply that would handle the city of Frostburg, an artesian well, which I have, and I'm going to end up paying ninety dollars every three months to not accepting the water. I asked at a meeting, I told them at the meeting, "I'm not paying it." And I'd like to know how they're going to run across, past my house, which I own the road, and they don't know where the right-of-way is to start with, but that's another story.
If the community as a whole don't want it, it won't come, Mr. Chambers, that's...
Mr. Brody?
Yes, sir, because I was at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And forty-six percent was against it, I mean, was for, and fifty-four percent was against it. That was at the second vote.
That was the one that was...
The first vote, the first vote was on the first, the first meeting that we had up the fire hall.
Right. Well, that was just to show a hand to see if there was any interest, that was just...
Nobody had to sign, we had to sign. If you wanted it, if you didn't want it, there was two sheets up there.
And the problem with that, again, was, is we had, nothing, there was no hat-tricks trying to be done here. We've got people calling in saying they signed the wrong form, or people calling in saying I wasn't the property owner of said property. That was the issue that brought all this to a head. That's why they're actually going door to door now, and it will be checked against land records. That's it, honestly, that is it.
And it is, it is going to a head, it is up there. We had a peaceful community at one time. Now they're going to give water, someone wants, someone don't want it, they voted down, and so we have meetings on it, okay? We vote again, then people's bickering, and with each other, which they didn't before, all right? Some wants it, some don't want it. This, they, the, the meeting, we have, they sent out ballots, and they counted the ballots, I was there, and this was what the final thing was on the ballot. Now, now, finally, they're calming down a little bit, looks like we're not going to get it. Now, we get this here paper here, I don't know, what are they going to do, bring the guns out, or what? Before we stop this, we got to stop!
Well, Mr. Chambers, if I may just add, at this point in time, and Commissioners, just indulge me for a minute, what really precipitated this follow-up meeting was, is that not long ago, the entire back row of this room was full of people who desperately needed the water, and they asked for us to take another look at it. And some of those folks admitted to us, either publicly or privately, that there was a lot of misinformation.
of misinformation being disseminated in the community. And I think to Mr. Kale's credit, he thinks just taking one more stab at it to make sure that everybody understands what's at stake here. And if we decide that it's a 60% vote down the road, the folks that don't want it, including those people who do not vote, then we're going to be going, looking for another community to expand the county's water system into. So be patient with us. But again, there were people that were just as passionate as you are, lining the back of this room up here not long ago, desperately wanting the water. And so we're trying to be responsive to those citizens as well, sir. So if you could just bear with us in this process, we just got one more step to make. We're going to meet with those folks next week, and hear their input, and take it from there, sir.
You got the advantage of me. I don't know your, I don't know your...
I'm David Everly, sir.
David?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Everly, I think anybody that needs water should have it. We can't live without water. We can't live without decent water, okay? I think they should have it, and I think the county's responsibility is to help them get it. Whenever I built my home, the first thing I did, whenever I got my property, I drilled a well to see if I could get good water. Then I built the house back in 1965. I got plenty of water. I was told that I had enough water to supply the city of Frostburg. And I get a check every once in a while to see if there's any change in it, and there's not. I get it checked at the House Department, and I get it checked at the College, and they check it for me. I have no problem. In fact, I'd even help people get water. But the thing of it is, why should I have to pay for not taking it? That's what I, that's my problem.
And Mr. Chambers, again, and this is, that's not our decision. That comes actually from USDA. That's nothing to do with Allegheny County, nothing. Honestly, it doesn't matter whether it's Sunnyside or Mount Savage, and this is a sad thing. But their regulations stipulate, if it runs through your property and it's a project they fund, you have to pay a certain portion of that line. That's, we can't get out of that.
This is not a Gestapo country. This is the United States, this is not a Gestapo country. This is the United States. This is the country that I fought for.
Okay, sir.
And I didn't fight for our country to come back here and... Okay. Now I said, "I ain't paying it. I ain't paying it." Okay. Well, you have, I want to pay it. Oh, you have to. No, I don't, I don't have to. I don't have to do nothing. Okay? At the end of the meeting, I said, "Did you all get a chance to talk this over? What are you going to do to them if I don't pay? Cut off my water? I ain't gotten the water. I ain't taking it." Okay. Put a lien on my house. Put a lien on the house. The free country that I fought for is going to put a lien on the house? I mean to tell you, hey! In Boston, this country started. Taxation without representation. Okay. This country would not pay for something they wasn't getting, and I'm not paying for something I'm not getting. I have a choice.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Thank you very much.
And I've watched Bill O'Reilly, and the spend's got to stop someplace. And it is a spend. It's got to, after, after three meetings and two votes, and we voted it down both times, and we're back again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Robertson?
I'm Tom Robertson, 14123 Upper Sunnyside Road Northwest. I'm here about the water thing again, same as Jim. Jim did a fine job representing our county, I want you to everyone to know that. And what I'm wondering, and since we've watched the Fox in the henhouse, who's going around with, what is it going to do, supposedly, check with everybody? Who's going to, who's going to be? Going to be me, or Jim, or maybe my neighbor, other neighbor? Who's going to watch the fox in the henhouse? That's what I want. Not only that, why can't we make an amendment for, I don't want the water either, I got the water too. And I had a property in Corbinville, and $10 a month back in 1999. By the time I sold the house, 13, 14, 15 years, it went $30 a month, what it is right now, right? What's going to stop that? Another, when I'm 53, and I get Jim saying, "Seven, who's going to stop me $100 a month?" Nobody's going to stop me. I'm going to be, I'm going to have to get back money to pay my taxes, and that's all this is, nothing but a water tax. And I think there should be amendment on this deal. If you don't need the water, whoever don't want the water, I want my neighbors that water too. But people that don't want the water, they should have an amendment. If you don't have water, you don't need for perpetuity. I'm sure you know what that means.
It's closed, perpetuity, forever.
Forever. And that's what I'm here about.
The problem with that, that is a federal regulation. We get, we get our loan from the federal government, and they say that, number one, there has to be a certain number of residents in an area, and they look at what the cost would be, how they're going to get their money back, because we have to pay it back. And that actually comes from the federal government.
Yes. That's a good, that's a good point. If you brought that up, taxpayers' money. To tax me, Mr. Chambers, and whoever else doesn't want that water, use taxpayers' money. I part, I pay taxes too. Yeah? Believe me, I pay taxes. And they're going to take my money to tax me, tax me till I die. That's what's going on.
Mr. Kale, is, if I'm not mistaken, isn't Sunnyside, there's two sections of the, of the area? Is there like an upper and a lower part of it?
Yes.
That we're looking at?
Sunnyside would be one though.
It would be all one, though?
Yes. The way to survey area, you have one geographic, where we have Berylville, we have Long 36, and we have Sunnyside.
But within it, it seems like the support is limited to an area, and the opposition is limited. I mean, I assume you all are neighbors or live semi-close?
People didn't, they, you know, they come off with, they didn't get the letter. You know. I got a letter, my neighbor got a letter, and other rest of the neighbors. The people that didn't send anything in, they didn't get the letter. I don't believe in that.
And that's, you know, when you have people that rent out houses, and as you do, you know, sometimes you have people that are there, they don't care what happens, you know, they don't have a vested interest. They'll just throw, they'll just throw it away.
Exactly. That's shame on them. But they didn't vote for the water, you know?
That's right. And so that's, that's, I think, why we're taking a second look at this, is that the view of the public was or was not properly represented?
Well, if they, if they, no. Why would they carry the weight?
What's that?
Why would they carry the weight if they didn't bother even reading it out of their mouth?
Well, because they're not, they're not the property owner. They don't have the sense of it.
A lot of these people are in their 80s. Half of them probably can't read it, half see now. I'm not, I'm not being smart, but a lot of these, you can ask Mr. Chambers, how many people are in there probably are turning up there? They probably don't even know what's going to be in that house.
Well, sir, this time we'll actually be going door-to-door and talking to people. What's that?
He's going to watch the Fox in the henhouse. He's going to be with you to make sure this is right. I'm not calling you a criminal.
I trust Mr. Kale. And if we were going, if we were just going to do it, no matter what people thought, there'd be a water line headed up the road right now. We wouldn't worry about taking a vote.
Well, I think this, my parents didn't get, think of it. You either got the water, or you're going to pay for it. At that time, my house was under construction. It cost me $2,000 to get water, because I didn't pay for it. By the time I got my house ready to live in, back in Corbinville, where I live in Corbinville, it cost me $2,000 to get water on because of that damn tax.
I just want to point out that you, you getting water, community wants water or not. It doesn't improve the Commissioners, it doesn't make the Public Works Department stronger. I'm not going to get a raise. Nobody in my department's going to get a raise. We're going to have more things to do. So we have no incentive for us to force water down your throat. I'm not getting anything out of the Commissioners, sir, and I can't get anything out. We just want to serve the community, and we want to serve the majority of people.
Okay.
And I think the other thing with the, you know, it's kind of question of integrity, but I appreciate, trust me.
I don't, I don't talk politics.
Okay, we're not trying to force anyone's throat, but I'll be happy to, we're going to have petitions to be signed. I'll be happy to show the petitions to anybody in your community, because you're going to sign your name and address, and you're going to indicate you're the owner, and you're going to say, "I'm for or against." So I'm certainly not going to go around, if you say you're against, and I'm going to put "for" by your name.
Yeah, but...
It'd be crazy, so I have no incentive to do that. But we'll open petitions then.
Why can't we make amendment for persons like me and Mr. Chambers? We don't have to pay for that tax.
The Commissioners can explain that because of the federal regulations.
Well, you can make an amendment. That's what they got to pay for.
It's the same way, there's a playground off of my house, and I don't...
We're not Mr. Obama. We don't have a cell phone and a pen to make these changes.
Well, why can't?
I think what, what we could do is, we could look at breaking up Sunnyside into two areas, if, maybe...
If the lower part didn't win, the upper part win. We could look at the dynamics then.
We could do that, but if you don't drive a car, you still pay taxes for the roads. If you don't have a kid in the school system, you still pay taxes for the schools. And that's kind of the situation here, and we were trying to limit it as close as we can to who wants it is who's going to be paying for it.
Yeah, but we went through all that.
All right, Mr. Kale, next Tuesday, is it Wednesday? I'm sorry. Next Wednesday, Mount Savage, okay? Well, I'm looking forward to...
You'll have opportunity at the meeting next Wednesday.
You'll show up at the meeting next Wednesday. We're all prepared, okay?
We'll look for some feedback from you after that meeting, sir. Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you.
Okay, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, March 19th, at 5:00 PM. And we do have the meeting in Mount Savage on the water line issue. And you can see the press release and look, look on the website to see the budget schedules since we're starting our budget process. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.